Strategic planning. Rules that.
When was that? Is it the special meeting?
Yes, yes. So I missed that one, so I did October.
October 6.
Yep. And then is that, is it September through or October?
It's October, November, December.
Okay, yep, so it's October. Yeah, I called in October. Well, yeah, then we have the strategic planning.
Yeah. And I'll come back to special meetings.
Yep.
You've been talking about the treaties yet?
Hmm.
They're coming.
Really?
Oh, yeah, a bunch is coming.
Yeah, negotiations. Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be fun. We go together and see the families. At least they're still not talking yet. Well.
Well, I mean, I mean, the legislative session.
Donovan, maybe your superintendents need to, uh, explain the irony of spending, uh, 500 billion on a prison. Yeah, but no money on schools.
That was the first comment we had.
Well, it's just like. Yeah. How many more prisons and bases do you want? It's like you paid for. These are bad ones. Seven million.
I mean, when we got just, um, we stayed in the new one, something. We went shopping. So we just need their portion.
Plus they.
Did they also say, you had three dealers. On how all the things you just mentioned, did he also say that is decreasing enrollment?
Yeah.
Well, decreasing, decrease enrollment statewide.
Yeah.
They took 16 million out of, out of the.
Right, so they're decreasing the money.
It's, it's actually a decrease in education, yes.
Yeah.
Their state age is the same. Well, our students, they say, you say age, student.
Right.
Full state of the world at 16. Read this.
Right. Well, then. What 16 million then?
Yes.
That wouldn't, would that even be a percent?
14.6 million is a lot of cents.
Yeah, she's right.
Oh, okay, so they could, they could be at one and a half percent-ish.
Uh, 1% is equal to 14.6 million, general public, 7.7 million, special education, 230,000 sparks.
Sure.
So 1%.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which I don't think I can dispute. Which is not all people, but I suppose it's moving up.
Right.
Which they rebase this here. Anyway, so they have 2.2.
It's the old one.
Well.
We do what we can. Better cover every one.
The last two. Yeah, we call those.
Well, and that's how it.
I don't know. I don't know.
Angie, did you have any committee meetings the last three months? October, November, December? I don't have any written down here. Okay.
You said you were.
All yourself. Okay. But was that September? Oh, that was September. I did that one right now. It was September that we. Yes. I did get that one. It was with you.
Yes.
You too. Yes. Okay, yes, like that was September. A good memory.
Yeah, I'm just gonna pick you and. I'm just like, which committee is that?
I know, I keep telling you. That's why I'm gonna get them in advance now.
Well, you probably keep track of what's, like, we did that external one, but I don't even remember.
Yes.
Not to actually know board agenda.
Consider not a special meeting. It's a special meeting, not committee, yes, and I know that.
So that's.
Right, absolutely, yep.
You guys are. Yeah, we're.
Yeah, I mean, I might, I might know stuff.
I'm not sure if you can see me on the other side of the tree, but please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the prior United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. All right, prior minutes, we're all sent out in our board packet. Do we have any questions or discussion, or do we approve the minutes previously held on number 10?
Make the motion to approve.
No second.
Jason with the first, Karen with the second. All those in favor of approving the board minutes on number 10, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Does not appear that there are any people here wishing to address the school board. Uh, next item, item number five, approval for agenda. Do we have any additional changes, Dr. DeBoer?
I, we do not, no.
Okay. Need a motion to approve. Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Matt with the first, Angie with the second. For those in favor of approving our agenda as proposed, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any new concept of interest disclosures? All right. Next item, item number seven, our consent agenda.
I would add to you, just, just to clarify, appreciate your patience on that, when, when the board meeting is as quick as it possibly can in a month, like, this is the 8th of December, so we, we try to wait as long as possible to give them bills in as possible so that we can pay as many of them as possible. So that's why the claims got put on today. Uh, generally, it's, if it's the 8th or the 9th, or maybe the 10th, we try to wait as long as possible, so that's why we're waiting for pretty good.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda. Second. All right, we have a first by Matt, second by Jason to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, little business, Ruth.
Okay, it's done.
Yay.
Um. Their plan now is to come, as of right now, is Wednesday. So Tranco will bring their people to come and look at it and basically do the punch list piece. And then in the spring, when we have thawed, there's no snow or whatever else for warranty when people come in. There's no, there will be no laps in warranty or any of those things, but they like to come when it's been in for a while and the weather's hit it and the weather's off, so a warranty review will be, um, in the spring. Once Tranco comes and does the punch list and says, this needs to be done, this does or whatever, most of the punch, once they go through that, it's new. And then the punch list is taken care of, we'll send our final banner, which I think is, I don't know.
117.
Yeah.
In some shape.
So we'll hold that until we get through that. Then we'll be able to go.
What's it like up there? Are we comfortable that we can do the punch list appropriately as far as snow covered?
They, they are. Uh, Ryan's coming, the gentleman spoke to us, so she didn't seem like it was a problem. We asked the very same question, like, how are we supposed to do this with, you know, snow and that, whatever, and she said, we, we have a, they don't really know what we're gonna do, they need to do. And I said, great. And if not, I think John will be with them, and I think they'll be, I think they'll be honest with us if they say, hey, we can, let's take a good check out. But just see what the weather brings. This was my problem, we pushed it to the southern. But, but.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, there was, uh, two rooms you talked about having like that, is that happened on this visit or did that happen later?
They looked at it, they've sent us a, uh, um, a, a, a plan and what they would do. I'm gonna have Ryan take a look at that, and they say this was Black Hawk, the people that actually did our work. We just grabbed them and said, hey, can you take a look at this? Um. Actually, I, I, I basically, I said, take a look at this, how can we fix this so that we stop having, stop having water running in our two classrooms? Um, is it possible to do it? Do we need to do it right the first time? Can we temporarily do it? Is that feasible financially? And now the goal is like 270,000. So we'll do it if Ryan says do it.
Sounds good.
For that price, so we can get, yeah, we'll be there with it.
And you can do it in cold, I mean, you said they could.
Right now.
Okay.
And then they would come, obviously come back and say, hey, so this is what we need to do to basically right now.
Right now.
In the HVAC, that's fine. The HVAC. We have an energy. For control, right? Those are all working great. And that's my whole philosophy. And then the techs, you sent us as well, the elementary. Yes, okay. And we feel like we have that revenue as well, they, they, uh, Mr. Chrome set up some access for us, like, offsite, so that we can check it in the meantime. That was, that was the perfect storm, meaning, there's not very many days where we're not here. Uh, you know, like this weekend, right, we were here Saturday all day, Sunday all day. It was Thanksgiving weekend, that might be the one weekend where there's a couple days where nobody's here. Sodans are off, we're all off, and it went down Friday morning. And nobody was here until early Monday morning. So, but they got hired up on it, now they're gonna use some more access.
Was that right? That's the one that we're doing.
John, myself, and Mr. Chrome.
Any other questions for Ruth H. D. C.? All right, moving forward to new business, uh, first item is PLECK.
Okay, so I just wanna give a little review of maybe, and Matthew, if you wanna go first, or if you wanna fill in gaps with me, or how you wanna go.
Yeah, you can.
So if you take a look at, just real briefly, on page 23 of your packet, you'll see the financials for that. So ironically, Kim and I have been talking about this for about a year, just getting our heads wrapped around Perry Lakes Educational Co-op, or what, what, uh, services we use through Perry Lakes, and kind of how that financially, what, how that makes sense. And it wasn't always adding up for us, but it's a team effort, as you see, there's a lot of schools on there trying to make this work. But what happened recently is Flanders had let us all know in November that they were going to be leaving, uh, the co-op. Which got a couple of other schools like Madison and ourselves going, well, we need to take a look at what that's gonna do financially for us. So if you look at the bottom of this chart, where it says 25,000, or 38,000, the remaining schools, so that's what, that's, that, this is on this year's, it would be like this year's numbers. So it's based on this year's budget. Not any increases for next year, not any, you know, whatever that will look like, but this is based on this year. So the increase to remain school will be just over 25,000, the average increase would be about 3100, so that would be three, another $3,000 for each school district. So based on the finances for this year, you see that puts us up to about 95,000 that would cost us to be in the co-op. The only service that we, that we, Del Rapids School District uses for the co-op is our psychologist. And that psychologist fee, you can see, I kind of done some basic math when I wrote down it, if you look on, based on FY '26, if, if it was 95,000 for us, the psychologist would be around 75,000. So you're already looking at savings of like $20,000 if we're not in the co-op. Part of the reason you're in the co-op is because you wanna help all your buddies and your neighbors, you know, some of these people that don't have these things. Well, once we started going down this road, and we talked about Del Rapids probably, if we made a look at, if not doing this, because financially it's better for us not to be in, automatically, everybody was kinda in the same boat. So we really started talking about disillusion more than just a couple of people getting out. Everybody has a little department, but our psychologist now already services Baltic X amount of days. Well, Baltic would need 30 days, and I've talked to their superintendent, their business manager already. If we charged them $500 a day, we would recoup then, um, you know, it would cost them about 60 grand, we're recouping minus 60 grand. Another, we're netting about $35,000. So cost them 15 grand to use our person for those 30 days, minus the, you know, the 75 that we're already paying, it could be right around that $35,000 that we could be saving if we, if we leave the co-op. And that's pretty conservative.
Leave the co-op and, and hire a psychologist.
Right, we would hire our own psychologists, yeah. Most cooperatives have birth of three, SLPs, which is speech therapist, um, OTPT. Uh, and as a school psychologist. We have our own, we self, we contract our own OTPT already. Uh, us and two other schools work together to get that just pricing wise, so we would continue to do that. We already have our own, we have two SLPs, and we already have our own birth of three here. So the only person we don't have is a psychologist. So, and I've had that conversation with our firm, uh, so we're good to go there, I won't go into too much detail because we're open session. Uh, but we're, we're, everything's great there, so. In a, in a long and conservative way, and I've talked to the Baltic superintendent, they're open with contracting for, with us. Um, again, it'll be about 35,000 to save.
Well, you know. Yeah, I'll just say, um, I'm the president of PLECK, um, and we had a pretty long discussion this last meeting. Um, basically, what it comes down to is you have to give notice before December 1st in order to leave PLECK. Flanders did that, um, so basically, they're gone, there, there's nothing we can do about it. So that added cost is there. That got some of the other suits talking about leaving PLECK. Dells and Howard both put notice in to leave PLECK before December 1st. So we have the opportunity to decide to leave, whether PLECK stays going or not is beside the point. Um, by our February meeting, we're gonna vote whether PLECK stays operational anyway. So we could vote to stay, and then PLECK could just go away anyway, so. But it's kinda, basically, Flanders essentially is the nail in the coffin, I mean, if, we were in it basically for the greater good of the other schools, um, and, yeah, I mean, probably 10 years ago, um, Perkins was a thing.
Yep.
And that was basically the reason PLECK was a lot bigger animal then, because Perkins paid for like a lot of shop tools and a lot of our CTE-type supplies. It was a way that the, the, the schools could run through this organization and then get money from the state and the federal government.
Yeah, they took, they took, they took those Perkins grant dollars away from individual schools and made you basically put them in a co-op.
Right.
Or a, you know, scholarship granting organization.
Right.
And so a few years ago, the state took them all.
Yeah, so once that went away, it was basically just their psych service. And, I mean, there's other things, there's training and that kind of stuff that PLECK does that, I mean, there'll be some other increases in cost other than just hiring a psych, but, yeah, I mean, it, it basically got to be where the bigger schools were just in it for the smaller schools type of a deal, but now it looks like it's gonna be easier for us to just team up with a smaller school and basically work out psych hours that way. And I guess the feeling is, we're close now to Sioux Falls, that we can get the psych hours we need. I mean, PLECK just hired a part-time psych, um, this year, we needed a few more hours to, and was it Baltic that needed the hours, or?
Yeah, we hired, we hired a brand new one.
Right, yeah, one, one hour, get our time off. Yeah, but we were looking at basically just paying the psychs for extra days because we were like 25 days short or something like that, and we ended up finding a part-time psych. So, I mean, the thought is, being as close to Sioux Falls, there is the opportunity. We're not gonna struggle for finding a psych in the future. Um, so, like I said, now it's basically our opportunity to decide whether we wanna get out, and Howard may get out, whether we get out or not, but it's just us and Howard that have the opportunity to get out. But then, I think, I mean, for sure, if us or Howard gets out, it probably is gonna not stand, it probably isn't gonna stand either way. I mean, just kind of from what the other reps from the other schools in PLECK were. I mean, I think Madison, basically, they said they're gonna stay, if PLECK is around, they're gonna stay because their business manager does, does the financials for PLECK, and they have a part-time secretary that does the secretary work for PLECK. So they kind of benefit. Yeah, they kind of benefit from PLECK being, um, in existence anyway, but, yeah, they're, basically, they're gonna stay in until it's done. So, but, yeah, I mean, it sounds like Tri Valley kinda wants to be done with it too, and.
There's no other services then that we would be giving up, that we would easily be able to.
Right.
Place.
Yep. No, the, the biggest thing is some of the smaller stuff, I mean, kind of the, the testing packets and the, um, the subscriptions or whatever you wanna call it, the, I mean, that's gonna be, you know, we're gonna have to pay to get our psych trained and, and that kind of stuff, where before, uh, PLECK could have sent one psych to get trained, they could train the other site, so basically, there was some shared costs. You know? It's not a, it's not, I mean, it's not a $30,000 deal, you know, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a small. We're gonna come out ahead, and, and honestly, I think, you know, really, after Perkins went away, we would have come out ahead then too. But now that Flanders is left, Flanders was a third of PLECK with the amount of, um, psych hours they used. They were a third of PLECK out of all the schools, they are a big user, so them leaving really changed the equation. I mean, that, it went, you know, from a, a small increase in what we could potentially save to a pretty large. So.
Yeah, when you're, when you're looking at, you know, financially, what all schools are doing here now, with what the climate's been, um, it's hard, if you're looking at Del Rapids, to not kind of want to do all the thing. The biggest thing is you're just kinda helping each other out, but I feel like that's, even in that just one short meeting, we talked about this, everybody kind of had partners that they could help out with, so.
It's a bit of a tangent, but I think there's a benefit to security to having psychologists on staff, mental health, medical threat prevention.
She was here about 125 days.
Right. We, I knew we had, I'm just saying. We do anyway, I guess the, the biggest concern that we might have is just replacing said psych when the day comes.
Sure.
But PLECK also has an issue, you know what I mean?
Yep.
So it's, but our proximity to Sioux Falls, I feel pretty comfortable that, um.
And just for the record, the, the main job shift of our school psychologist does, does all of our professional education testing. Um, if somebody's referred to professional education, they have to be tested, that's what that says, and then every student that's on individual education, individualized education plan gets reevaluated every two years. So, yeah, anyway, my recommendation would be, so that we can give PLECK some direction sooner than later, I think that whole thing happens January meeting, this is like a January PLECK meeting, then the February meeting.
Yep. Well, my recommendation would be to say that we're, we're gonna leave PLECK involved on our. It's like I told the other board members of PLECK, basically, this meeting that every, all the school districts are having, basically discuss what your intentions would be if, and basically, then it's up to us and Howard to decide whether we wanna pull out or not. And then our next meeting in January, basically, we will discuss as a PLECK group what did happen, and then, basically, then they'll go back to their boards and discuss it with the facts of what we decided, Howard decided. And then by February, um, our February meeting, the PLECK Board of Directors can vote, have to vote whether or not to disband.
Right.
So.
All this on, like, constitution bylaws.
Yes, yep.
One thing, too, the savings with kind of, um, bringing in our situation, we've just been dealt out in here, we have to be responsible, so just the same.
Yep.
So, I mean, we need to make a motion to.
Yeah, we, we need a motion as a board to, you know, uh.
I'll make a motion. That we leave PLECK.
So I have a first by Andy and a second by Karen. All those in favor of leaving PLECK, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you for serving our board, your man.
Yep.
Just cost you some money. Right, the next item, under new business, is setting our school board election for 2026.
I'm gonna let Kim take this one.
Yeah, so in legislative session last year, they, uh, mandated that you have your election, your school board election. Now with the primary elections either in November or June, um, June 2nd or November 6th or 3rd or something like that. Um, they are highly encouraging school districts to do the June election, obvious reasons, we have our fiscal year July 1st, and so it doesn't really make a lot of sense to November, and so to have the least amount of head up, we will be setting our election or whatever, you said it, for June 2nd, 2026. That is a change, our normal election day is in April here. Um, I have done elections in June before, and it'll be fine, it's just different.
So when is your, when do you go out for signatures then?
Yeah, so you're, we announced the, um, vacancy, that's the word, vacancy, in the paper the next two weeks, and then you start petitions, I believe. Oh, I should have wrote this down, I think it's February 3rd through March 15th.
So it is the same.
It's about the same timeline, you do your petition a lot earlier in comparison to the election date now.
Sure.
So, I mean, you're gonna be used to petition time the same time of the year, it's just gonna be a big delay waiting.
I didn't know if they would change that, so is that the school bylaws that dictate when you.
Uh, Saltorca law.
Is when you cert, certify your petition?
Yep, yeah.
Hmm. But then they still, yeah, they just moved the.
Correct. You got it.
Interesting.
They moved it to primaries and Super Tuesday. Basically saying you, you, how was it being legislators, thought that that would increase voter turnout?
They thought it would increase voter turnout and save costs with combination or combining of elections.
Which is not happening.
That the combined election is not an idea that I would get behind, just because your school district voters are different than your city voters, than your county voters, and you would have so many different variations of the ballot. I would still highly suggest you have it at the same location, just two tables, two ballots.
We've always ran our own anyways.
Yeah, that's what I would use.
There's some school, there's a lot of school districts that have done the combinations before, it's a lot bigger, and they now, they're having a nightmare trying to figure it all out.
Yeah.
Because different voting precincts in different zones are different in the school districts, and then figuring out who's getting, how, what ballots look like. Is it one ballot, is it multiple ballots?
So, in, in theoretically, you'd have your normal, uh, ballot staff, and then maybe we'd have a separate table for the school board.
We have our own, yeah, okay.
We have our own staff, yep.
Yeah.
Just like.
Or our own table, our own ballot.
Yep.
They could check them in, but they'd have to have two books of eligible, or eligible voters based on. based on what type of election they're voting in.
So does the city also have to have their elections then?
I believe so, yeah. They were in my training last week and they are.
Townships?
Everything.
Everything. Huh.
It's another one of the assembly and great ideas, the law, right, but now it's, I mean, we've had like half a dozen revisions on.
Yeah, the schedule.
State attorneys, sensory revisions.
I just got another notice from the Secretary.
On time.
State.
Laws and.
They've been changing daily.
It's.
It's, it's pretty messy. It wasn't clear when they voted it in.
We got support that Attorney General's Office wouldn't send updates anymore.
Yeah, they just. Yeah.
Cause then they'll do, when would they do the primaries then? Will that be that day in June?
Mm-hmm.
So you're good, you're gonna have district primaries.
Yeah.
Township elections. And. I'd have three different locations I'd go to.
I would boost that.
Handy.
Now we have to have a better holiday for election days.
Twice.
Yes, so, um, please motion to set the.
Election. I don't know.
Awesome. Right, I have Karen for first, Jay for second. All those in favor of setting our school board election date to June second, two thousand and twenty-six, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, uh, next item under new business is strategic planning. Um, Dr. DeBorison, another notification, I think it was yesterday? Of the, of the changes, yeah? So yeah, apologize. The changes were made yesterday. What's that?
I think it was.
This morning?
This morning, sorry.
It's been a long day.
But, uh, Jason, Karen had worked to make some changes, so I'll give them a floor to talk through that now. And then the rest of the board can ask any questions. A couple of overhauls to that, so. Floor is yours, Jason and Karen.
Yeah, sounds good. I'll start. I did make copies of these for everybody, so. So I'll reference this, this document that you have in front of you. It's staple, um. Karen and I just got together to make some, I guess, um, mostly we got together to define excellence, I guess is the best way to put that. Uh, because that was the one piece that was sort of missing through this process of, of talking through the pieces.
Jason and I just, I think, there was a lot of strategic planning this last few days. That's not why he's wearing referee shirts.
Sorry. I think Danny does so much refereeing, he decided that it's not gonna change out of this. Uh, so then, I think we'll start on page one, let's got the values, et cetera. And, uh, I'll talk about, I'll talk about excellence and then I'll let, um, Karen talk about why we consolidated values a little bit, um, and then if you have any other questions. None of the other information has changed other than it was reordered a little bit. And we really just did that for flow, the idea of reinforcing the idea of excellence by starting with it in values and, and then reiterating it. That's why the, the order changed, so to speak. Um, so the addition is excellence. Excellence is defined by continuous growth for every student and high-quality instruction in academics, arts, and athletics demonstrated by Dell Rapids Public Schools, reaching and sustaining top twenty percent performance across goal areas in the DAC twelve conference. That's not a substantial change from anything that we've talked about in the past. Uh, what we did do was take into account uh, concerns from the other board members in timeline, timescale. Um, and we dealt with that by essentially putting the timescale, if appropriate, into the goal area itself in the other four sections. Um, so if you wanna talk values quick, then I think we can answer questions about this page before we move on to the goal areas.
Sure, um, values, we just, um, kinda reworded them, like I said, just to reinforce the excellence that actually number ones and fives are overall vision and mission. Um, and then we thought that empathy could be incorporated into respect um, for conciseness and, um, you know, they say a lot of the same things, so just to incorporate that in there and have a nice number of five. Um, and so that's our recommendation. Um, also empathy is a word that is being tossed around a lot. Now, some of the definitions aren't always accurate, and so actually putting the definition in with respect makes more sense. Rather than having a word that, um, is kind of used interchangeably, sometimes incorrectly in there. So I think we're off some values.
So this page as a whole essentially represents our recommendation to the board. It's still open for discussion based on the email that was sent out last week with the board packet. So if we want to, I guess essentially we can either vote on this as a whole, or if we wanna discuss, you know, individual pieces and then we'll make the changes if that's the board's direction as far as the differences in mission language and mission language. And whether or not we're good with our definition of excellence.
Of course.
I just have one thing and I know I probably should have mentioned this previously, but I can, I can't just point it out here, so. I know in the external focus groups, we had talked about, do we change the vision? Keep it like we empower each other to excel? That's what we currently have. Or do we expand on and have in academics, arts, and athletics? But we are going to define excellence here and it says that our definition of excellence is to maintain this high-quality instruction in academics, arts, and athletics. We're sort of defining it there, so then would, would it make more sense to just keep the vision what we already have? Um, as long as we have excellence clearly defined and it defines academics, arts, and athletics, it can be those three areas. That was some of the, I think, I don't know what you guys, but in my group, some of that was like, well, if we exclude that, or you know what I mean, if we can find these three in the, in the vision, then we probably exclude this or this, you know? And then the flip side of that is we empower each other to excel. Well, in what? But if we're defining excellence, then we're telling what we wanna excel in, is my thought. So maybe we do go back to just the unit what we currently have, so we don't have any changes.
The group bylaws, I think, said the same thing.
Just a, I mean, before we didn't have, but now that we do, maybe it does make sense. Now, just that, that was my own money. I'm gonna be honest.
Okay, I'm okay with it. Not any questions?
No, that's, that's the one that I had as well, because of, yeah, the, in our focus group, I mean, it's, you know, there's personal growth, there's kindness, there's, you know, relationships. I mean, it's like, how, how long do you make, you know, when you're, when you're defining something, you know, it's kind of, you're calling things out, but if you leave it open, then you're not excluding anything. So.
Yeah, and I would echo the same thing. Again, I'm taking two guys from the group that we had here, the internal focus group, so I guess just, it sounds like we're called, maybe kind of somewhat in agreeance on this first page. What we're talking about is striking from the vision, the in-academic arts and athletics piece, is that accurate?
Correct.
So just for the sake of being here and like, this is one thing and this is another, I'd like to vote on this front page and then have you guys review the second half, still the data in the back part. And then they can vote on that. So for this first part, I, I guess that we would, somebody would need to make a motion to approve, um, the strategic plan of front page with the change of removing academics, arts, and athletics. That would be the motion, they'll be on the floor.
Um, I just wonder, based on the email that went out, if we need to discuss the creed before we vote on the pages as a whole.
Does anybody have any questions on it? I, I'm fine with it as is.
The only thing we, we had discussed over the weekend, Dr. DeBor, you can weigh in on this. What is your feeling on buy-in from the teachers or whatever on the, on, on creed? I mean, are they aware of it? Do you, do you see any issue with implementing that as an additional?
I don't see a problem. We just have to figure out how we put it in. If it's something we wanna educate our students on, especially starting in elementary, like what creed is and why it's important, if this is what ours is and we can have conversations of whether we want to memorize it or if we wanna read it during announcements or, I think it's just something we talk about to implement.
We just, yeah, I mean, we think it's a good idea cause we included it obviously. I just don't, one thing we talked about is we don't wanna just, we don't wanna give the teachers another thing to manage, so if they're not, you know, not gonna be behind it.
Also, I think we can get, we can figure out a way to.
Well, I think one thing that is beneficial of it too is it's, uh, my opinion, this is a way to hold kids accountable for their behavior. So if you have a kid who's acting up in a certain way, you can sit him down and say like, this is how we are here as warriors, or this is our creed, this is, we wanna drive by this. Like, I just feel like it's a teaching opportunity. Um, or accountability tool as well, so.
Yeah, if you put it in announcements, you can put it in our, there's a lot of things you can do. I mean, we're really good at making t-shirts and sweatshirts around here, we could put them on everyone.
Should it say driven? Someone said dry, it says drive by excellence, should be driven by. Not, not a big change.
There you go.
I just noticed that, I'm sorry. But anyway, other than that, I think it's.
Yeah, I have no other comments. I agree.
Alright. And I guess.
Karen making the first?
I'll second.
Angie with the second. Uh, although in favor of approving the, uh, district strategic plan front page as proposed with those two small changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, now we're on to the second half, which is the our four goal areas and if you got through the changes, that were made.
Sure, Ken. So first of all, I have to give you a pass on formatting. Formatting gave me a hard time this weekend, so that'll be fixed before we go to publication. Don't worry about it. I just wanted it in there. Our biggest thing with including the bullet points. Um, is we wanna make sure that all input was validated. That's kind of the emotional piece of it. On the practical side, once we publish this, I don't wanna have to have the four of us or whoever like constantly explaining why we left out all the input because we, the plan is not to leave it out. So the only difference is, is we just won't enumerate those in the publication, so as we get through our action steps and we complete them, then we can promote the bullet points or whatever was kind of our, our thinking there. So that's, that's that formatting piece there. We made three small changes to the action steps um, that are on there, and so I'll just enumerate those quick so you know where they're at. Under academics, we had two action steps that were, uh, CTU related and essentially they were identical in the last document, or not identical. One said we're gonna have local businesses and one said we're gonna engage with the Sioux Falls CTE Academy, so we just combined those into one action step because they're both being explored concurrently. Um, under facilities enhancements, so the third goal area, um, there were three action steps in the last document. We, um, the third action step had to do with assessing physical security. And so that's being done concurrently with the facilities assessment that the administration is already doing, so we felt that since physical security is part of facilities, um, we just added two words to the second action step to include physical security and then, um, remove the third action step just to ease them. And then the third change is gonna seem initially like a little bit of a, a left turn. But, uh, I'll give you sixty seconds of our logic and you can decide whether it makes sense or not. Under public relations, we added an action step at the beginning which says achieve a thousand downloads on the Courier mobile app. Our logic behind adding something out of the blue is this, we spent quite a long time discussing how do you measure public relations in a way that doesn't shoot us in the foot? Because we have a lot of communication silos and other things and objectively, we're probably never gonna hit a home run on communication and public relations. Not everybody is always going to be happy with the way, um, that we do that. So we discussed, is, essentially is there a way that we can input on metric that's measurable? That affects that downstream stuff in a positive way, all the engagement things that we've talked about in the past, right? And what we came up with was let's just work towards getting the mobile app in the hands of as many end users as possible as a goal, because that's easily measurable. I don't know how easy it is to achieve, but it's easily measurable. And then going forward in the future, we can use survey um, input as that metric. But that survey has to be compared to something and it hasn't been created yet. So this will give us kind of an interim metric and it's one that's easily measurable. The number one thousand is round. We kinda did some math and figured there are twelve to fifteen hundred end users for the app in the district. Parents, grandparents, teachers, high school students, et cetera, all of us. Um, so that's how we got to that point. So if you're wondering why we just arbitrarily added one, we wanted to give an opportunity for a win.
That also our understanding, uh, they started, we're at a hundred plus right now. We don't know what the plus is. And we believe the next metric is about there, so.
That too, yeah. So pulling up on Google's plus and it says a hundred plus downloads. I don't know if that means one one, nine ninety-nine, so we might almost be there, I don't know.
I don't even know. I'll have to talk to Mr. Crump to see.
Don't expect you to know it. We didn't prime you for this question. It's not, it's not.
Well, I was looking at where it says responsible and I, I just had visions of, you know, tax time, those people up there with scientists in the, Jeff Crump. You dress. Maybe put Rocky on and we'll look at the design.
A monthly post for the school board members on Facebook. Have you downloaded the app yet? Share.
So before, uh, we go into goals, metrics, deliverables, does anybody have any questions about those three changes to the, to the action steps that we had previously agreed on or concerns, if you want?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. So I will just, um, everybody's got it in front of them. I'll read the goal area out loud just for the sake of the audience, if there is one, um, but I won't go through all the metrics and everything else, so you can read that as I read aloud. And then if you have questions or you want clarification on our thinking or whatever, fire away. So under academics, uh, the goal is defined as the Dell Rapids School District consistently performs in the top twenty percent of schools in the DAC twelve conference by twenty thirty. And that date came from one of the action steps, I think, Dr. DeBor. Did you put that date in there as an action step?
Yeah.
You're gonna get started with it, so that's where that date came from.
Okay.
Um, and then you have metrics and deliverables.
I don't have any questions specifically, but I'm assuming across the board, Dr. DeBor involved in the metrics and deliverables discussion?
Yes, these, all these metrics and essentially the deliverable that'll come from Dr. DeBor, his team is, is how do we define top twenty percent? Um, but, but, or that's more that you've, you feel that those metrics and those deliverables are achievable as they're written?
Yeah, I can get them.
Okay.
Some of them aren't necessarily really available, but I can, I can get them.
Okay. Well, and so we sort of use this defined top twenty, that's gonna come up again and that's in the. And that's in the hundred personnel and just, and unites conversation. Understand that some of these things are like total package. So before we get to the next review process for this strategic plan in a year or whatever, it'll give you some time to define top 20%. Because I don't, I mean, speaking for me personally, I don't want it to be just ACT scores, right? It's a whole system, whole picture type thing. So top 20% is not just one metric. It's a algorithm or whatever you want to call it. And that's something that we're not qualified to answer. It's a team thing for you and your.
Yes, you bet.
Any other questions? I don't, I don't know if I'm.
You're not ready? Although I am Karen. This conversation.
What did I say?
Just for any.
We've just been hanging out too much here. Okay, moving on to personnel. So the goal under personnel professional development, Delaware City School District will increase target professional development opportunities for staff. And DRPS will staff compensation retention will meet or exceed top 20% of the DAC 12 conference by 2042. So in past discussions, I understand this timescale has made people nervous. It is based on a linear progression of where we stand right now compared to other schools, based solely on base pay. So if you go down to deliverables, it's going to say in there again, we need a definition of total staff compensation. Because with, again, we understand that base pay is just one metric. And I guess my point there is, and it's sort of a challenge to Dr. DeBoer is I think that timescale will shorten as we change the the met, you know, the definition of what top 20% means, because it's not just about teacher base pay. It's about a number of things, including retention statistics and other things like that. So, but that's where it stands right now. If we approached it as a board only from a base pay of, of teacher standpoint, that's about how long it would take at this point to accomplish. So that's where that logic and that timescale come from. Questions on any of that?
I would say the goal of that conversation piece, where we have state metrics for those type of things, so we could easily do that. I'm not sure how not impossible it can be done. So I'm just giving out two cents. On retention piece, I just don't know how to find the retention for the DAC 12 schools.
I got, I have the data. Well, I have the data based on what the state department that puts out.
Yeah.
Retention's a tricky thing too.
Yeah, it is.
There is, I mean, we, we got just some retention last year or some retention opportunities attrition.
Yeah.
And so I would say that's a.
Oh, we get close. I just don't know. It would take time to define it.
And we, I think we appreciate that. That's why it's, it's part of that whole conversation. Because there are, it's, it's like you said, it's nuanced and we understand that. It's when you're losing people you don't want to lose for reasons you can or can't control, that it becomes an issue. I don't think we're there right now, but we want to avoid that in the future, I guess is another way of putting that, right? So, yeah, I, I think we can do it. I guess I'm just following up with Jared's original question on the first one. I'll go to the next one too, just to see if it's feasible or not. Other questions?
Not for me.
Comfortable. Moving on to facilities enhancement. Uh, this goal is an extension of our conversation of last time and conversations that were had at the second external focus group. This idea of understanding what we have, what we want, what we need essentially. DRPS provides high quality facilities that meet or exceed industry standards for all curriculum offerings. DRPS projects a capital lay of maintenance plan that addresses the funding requirements out to the furthest anticipated need. It strives to provide competitive facilities compared to other districts in the DAC 12.
I don't have a question. I'll just say I appreciate that wording because it's it's a, it's a more generalized goal than we have. And I like that it kind of, it's a, it's a blanket standard and we address all the nuances in the action steps or those other items that aren't, don't have numbers yet. But I like that that was more generalized, I guess. I just, let's say appreciate that change.
Yeah. I think for me personally, one thing that I thought was really valuable that I hadn't realized, I hadn't considered out of the second external focus group was this idea that personally, I didn't really have an idea of what we, what we had. And that's really where you got to start. Duh, right, but I hadn't thought about it. So that was a thing that came out of that process. Any other questions? Issues on that? All right, fourth final goal area, public relations. DRPS will strive to tell our stories of success better than any other district in the DAC 12. By May 2026, will issue 1,000 downloads on the Courier mobile app. And the 360 survey appearance committee members will be conducted in May and then annually thereafter to assess.
What did we do on our survey this year?
Our last survey would have been like, well, by May it will have been 18 months or three semesters, right? Deco Ed Consulting did it. It was this time a year ago.
Okay. So that timeframe is, okay. That makes sense then?
You know how, it's a suggestion maybe, it's something to think about, I guess. Especially if our goal is to have the 1,000 downloads by May of 2026. But like, we go to clinic or something and you go to register, they always, always ask you about, you know, how to download at the portal or whatever, so access to medical records and that kind of thing. So like, we have opportunities where we have, everybody has to go register their kids for classes or everybody has to register for this or that or the other thing. Like, could we somehow put a plugin or here, download this app? Because seemingly, a lot of people that I talk to when I'm pulling up the schedule, they're like, well, where'd you find that? And then they go, it's on the app and they don't even know about it. So just awareness too, I think is an important thing.
Or outside the room of conferences.
Yeah, just finding ways that is continually put in the plug for the app would be a good idea. And I don't know if it'd be.
We could have Q R.
Q R for something for people to scan on their way out of the building and.
I still like resting up Mr. Crum and spending the sun.
Anyway.
We'll consider that if we get stuck at 999.
It'll be three days after.
So we did not make any changes to the responsible start date progress update on any of these because that's really, that's really something. Um, and, and then we're happy to to help in whatever way we can. So.
My other question on this one would just be like one and four. We're definitely, we want to get a bunch of, I do think our app is really good. I think the more people we get to download it, the better. I went to a PTO meeting the other night and nobody, the captain had the whole month. Do we still want to move forward? I know we didn't get the grant this time, but do we still want, do we want to push for them to download this app just to maybe move to a different one?
So, yeah, that's a good point, just for the board's information. We did end up getting that grant from some community foundation this time. Although I sort of spoke about that grant a lot, it should be understood that that grant was Plan B. Matt's been working on this app in his own lane for a while. And so he's going to continue to do that. And it was never really my intention for us to own that piece of it and have to work on it. So, um, I think we still, I mean, in my opinion, we still support his efforts. And if it gets to a point where it's ready for us to be a part of that, that, you know.
Maybe I'll just talk to him to see what his timeline looks like.
Yeah.
When we are looking at our progress update mostly.
Yeah.
So are you saying keep it as a number four for now or are you saying?
Yeah, sure.
So like, my thought process was we already have this app. It's being underutilized and that it is like the easiest measurable. And we have no idea when this next one is going to come into play. So let's use what we have and like try to, you know, build up some speed. And if we get the 1,000 downloads on that and then this comes into play, it should be an easy click. You can announce and I'm like, hey, if you want streamlined app or app briefing, there's this one.
There's this one here, yeah?
Yeah. But I was just like, we have this app that they've done a lot of work on.
Yeah, that makes sense. I, I forgot Matt.
Yeah, he had already been working on it when that grant came into the picture. And will continue to, so. Just for your identification, scaling apps is crazy expensive. So you can get sort of what you want for like five grand and you can get exactly what you want for 50 grand and there's nothing in between. So.
Yeah, I thought. So the board, any other discussion? I guess the next goal for our board would be to approve the four goal areas, academics, professional development, public relations and facilities enhancements as outlined in the document presented by Karen and Jason. I'll give them the first.
I'll second.
Matt with the second. Although those are in favor of approving the document presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Jason, why don't you want to take those down and send me or how do you? As a PDF, right?
Yes, I also have it as a Word document. It's just, like I said, formatting is giving me a lot of hacks. So I thought I'll make it a PDF so you guys don't have to.
Sure.
Didn't know how it was going to present. But yes, we've got several and, you know, we'll have to decide how much of the, the document from DC are going to
add and.
Keep like survey wise and like, I don't think we need 40 pages of survey in the final document. We got to talk those pieces and then we can come up with something for everybody to say, hey, yeah, let's publish.
Sounds good. Thank you guys for that extra work this weekend.
Yeah, really good. All right, item number 10, super center reports, 10 A, sorry.
Okay, I'm going to keep this parallel so we can get to the bottom of here and even do, update the council. But what they, uh, since we're reading update, talk to Mr. Mark Juan, we're in for his teachers in that meeting in January. Wanted to get through the first semester here and let them get familiar with that curriculum. But we will have some people report to you guys on just how that's going with the curriculum from the elementary side. So that'll be in January for me. Page 24 of your packet, C I F finalized some of our dates or all of the dates for. So I'm really a patient series that has this in the past. Been fairly successful, but I haven't necessarily been successful by a thousand people being there. Hopefully we get some people that are interested. It's really geared towards parents. Obviously students can come too, but I've really tried to get education for the parents in the community on certain things that we kind of beat that drum all the time with our kids. But you see, the first one is called Freedom and they're essentially to talk like internet app safety when in regards to human trafficking. Emily's Hope is, I'm sure you guys are familiar with it, Angela Kemke. And that's a lot, a lot of hers was. Covers a lot of things with that. The third one in March, it's me, but it'll also be I'm trying to get somebody to come in from a university as well, just, I'm still in talks with them, but that'll be myself and brother Mr. Day and then wherever we get the kind of there. But that's AI for home and school. Right place, Ali, come learn some things. But basically, it's going to be good educational use of artificial intelligence and the ethics behind it as well is what they'll be. And I think we can do some fun ones to parents if they found that they can use their own. So I think that'll be good. And then the last one is subsequent to the Department of Criminal Investigation, D C I. They're doing internet safety, but more on the realm of educating parents on what websites and apps are out there that people are specifically using for fraud and to deceive our students. So those are the four things that we're going to start with and we'll see how successful they are. But I anticipate we'll get some people to come.
That is great. If anybody's ever done the rest and human trafficking in Girdon Town, that money goes to all programs. So there's a connection located for them.
And we'll send the reminders out there. We'll have little flyers like this for all of them. We just have the first one for now, but we'll get an offer. And the app. And go from there. So I'm excited about it. And then last but not least, just real quick legislative update. As you guys know, you listen to the budget dress. Governor said zero, which I'm actually afraid to cut with the declining enrollment number, which is basically minus 1.56% that they're not putting in. Also, just the fact that we have rising insurance costs, we have rising utilities costs, we have rising health insurance costs. But yeah, it's all going to be staying the same. That's really a cut to all schools. So very beginning stages of all this, I'm hopeful that they'll come off of that. I don't know if hopeful, but it is an election year. I personally think that this could be a year where there's 550 bills and fraction get passed because you've got the governor that's running for reelection. You've got somebody that's in the leadership position that's also running for governor. They all have their people. You've got a couple. And you've got Doan on one side too that's running. So you just, you just never know who's going to get in. But, but we'll see. I think there's money to be had out there. You know, just for talking points, I'll, I'll be putting something together for you all. So if you all, if you have a chance to meet with any legislators or email, I'll share you the email address. Share that website, we'll talk about public schools, any resources that I have, I'll share with you and send to you. But, you know, they put 63 million in reserves. They're putting another 70 million in reserves going from 10 to 12.5%. You've got the $16 million that they're taking out of the Stadia formula. You've got unclaimed dollars that are there. I know that'll be one time money because they've taken all that money and they put it in trust now. So you're really, in the future, they're going to kind of know what the interest looks like. So that could be ongoing dollars. You have 14 million unallocated. I've never heard of that before. And then you just start going down the rabbit hole of 2017, 1617 recovery hard perhaps on sales tax. Those legislators that were on that side worked really hard. Educators worked really hard, lobbyists. We went from four to 4.5 in sales tax. In one year, they took that from 4.5 to 4.2. 4.5 to 4.2 is 105 million dollars. And for the last four years, we've been 4.2. They would kept that at 4.5. That's 420 million dollars that they could have had to use for education, probably actually be whatever it would be. And they elected to take away from what they put in that everybody worked hard for and drive it down to 4.2. Now that sun sets here in a year, so they may put it back to, I don't know. But there's, point being is there's money there. My opinion is there is, you know, property tax issue in some counties. It's a county deal. And I think we've defeated the legislators that are currently there in a number of topics like vouchers. I don't want to pick the big three against each other. I never would do that, but out of the big three, state employees got insurance, Medicaid got a bump. We get zero. Guess I'll let you guys read between the lines on that, but I feel like there's some other one here. Hopefully we get there, but there'll be some other hot topics, as you guys know, actually before. I really think the fight's going to be a little fun at this point in time. So we'll see. Although I do have more guys coming in Wednesday. Senator Vishki helped me line that up. We talked with, with Representative Hansen, Representative Hyman. And as of now, they're coming to meet with us at 11 o'clock on Wednesday. The other district, 25 of our super tennants coming at 10 o'clock. So we'll develop a counter plan that I would want to visit with them. Hopefully we'll stick around for lunch. Hopefully, we'll stick around for lunch, we're having burgers that they have heard, so, and food at school lunch, and got a couple cool things going on in the school, and I hope I can get them around to, show them the great thing you're doing about the education. Uh, that's it, that's all I have.
Item number 10B, that is committee reports and board comments. Thank you for the group for sharing.
Oh, and I'll cover Seattle.
Yep. I just got a quick comment, seems like a long time ago, because it happened the day after the last meeting, but I just want to say thanks to Mr. Denny, Mrs. Mark Wong, and their team for the Vets Day Ceremony. I went to both of them, they were both awesome. I appreciate it personally, but I just want to reiterate, like I said last time, it's really important for our Vietnam vets. I grew up in a post 9/11 world, and I never had to deal with any societal issues around, you know, fighting war. And those guys had a lot of problems, and they're just now, in their twilight of their life, getting some of the recognition they deserve, so it really means a lot to them, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Item number 10C, calendar for events.
So we talked last month about having kind of a standing agenda item, just to go over what's kind of, what's going on in school, as far as things that you guys, as board members, would like to go. So I just thought I'd put that in this review, so we review a few of your things. An example of that would be, not necessarily all the things, the things that are on the calendar, but maybe some other things that are going that aren't there. So just to give you a couple things that aren't, the ball games and the things that are listed on there, I put it away at the concert tonight, but December 19th, from, what time? Mr. Denny, 8:30?
Yep, 8:30.
Career fair, going to high school. That's 8:30, a lot of players, 11:50. So if you're, if you're around, you want to come check that out, you're certainly welcome to do that. January 5th, then, is the culture, the first community ed piece. And I think those will be the only two things, outside of, we have something going on every day when it comes to activities and athletics, and those are general.
And for the December 19th, I'm planning on being there. It might not be so about 9:30, but I will be there.
Be bopping.
That's happening in the June?
No, it's, it'll be in the high school and classrooms. We've got. Oh, we got handfuls. They've got a great job to get people, you know, it's trying to cover all the CTE clusters, so. Yeah, lots of options for the kids, they're going to go choose three, to go two, and so. But how many total did you say?
18?
18, yeah.
Still have a few on the back. Probably have around 11 there.
Awesome. I thought there was one more thing, but if there is, I don't know.
Okay. Um, the next regular scheduled meeting we have is currently January 12th, 2026, at 7:00 PM. Just to check that that timeframe still works for everybody. Is there day and time work for everybody with all their activities?
It is, I don't know, we've got college kids, that's when the next semester starts. We can probably back from moving by then, but you have to be aware of that. Add the middle school booths, middle school wrestling.
Okay, all right, we will continue with our meeting at, on July, January 12th, 2026, at 7:00 PM, as stated, so. All right, with that, we have on our agenda, executive session for South Dakota, South Dakota Code of Federal Law, 1-25-2, Section 1, which is personnel. So, what have you said? And then everybody else.
He'll stay, I'll take off, we'll leave, and talk a little bit, and then I have a meeting with these two, and if you want to chat with me.
I'll make the motion.
My apologies, Matt, we have first motion to go ahead, Jason, the second. For those in favor of moving to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
If you want to chat, maybe I'll be in my office at the concert time, and then.
We need to wear on in your office, correct?
Yep.